All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District. It is held Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P. M. District Administration.
We just. States, government, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, with his goal, with the reading and justice for all.
Do we have any signups for approval? Okay, thank you. Moving on then to the business report. There was this one item I was trying to discuss with the board tonight, and I'll probably bring it up again next week. Just wanted to revisit the expectation of what happens after we speak at privilege of the floor. This evening, we don't have anyone speaking. And also, what happens after you send an email to the Board of Education? So when community members come up here and share their thoughts, comments, and concerns, notes are taken by the superintendent. And I'd say most of the time, probably ninety nine percent of the time, actions are taken by folks not at the Board of Education. A lot of those items get addressed by the superintendent or by building heads or by certain directors. The same thing happens with emails. When you send emails in, they're forwarded over to the superintendent, who then in turn forwards them to the right parties. And those are the actions that are taken. Any follow up emails that you'd like to send, we always welcome them, good, bad, or otherwise, to know what's going on, but that is really the the order of action that's happening. So just wanted to share that with folks listening, and we'll probably bring that up again next week as well. That includes the other five. All right, our next point, our legislative update. Mr. John Sullivan.
Thank you very much. So it was the first Oxford meeting of the year. Sure, what is exciting about. Senator Equal, the Ms. But President, so the New York State Board Association President was the guest speaker. Kind of just hit on a couple points that I just thought were important for everybody here to know. One being artificial intelligence. So this was sent out a survey to New York State Boards, basically soliciting their opinion on artificial intelligence and whether they felt like it would be pertinent for us to have a policy regarding it. So two thirds of the boards came back and said, yes, so it is something that Ms. But is looking into. About a primary advisor on. Another hot topic has been cell phone bans. I know I don't think it's come up too much with us, but I know in our area it's come up quite a few times. And because of the varying opinions of the boards and state, this was not taking a position on cell phone bands, so. And then the last thing, which I thought was really great, that, you know, sometimes when we're in this room and we think that some of the issues we face are isolated to us. One of the best parts about Oxford is hearing that these things often are presented to the boards everywhere. And I'm just gonna read for a second, so. They brought up literacy and reading instruction. And I know that there's concerns concerning that all teachers not use phonemic awareness in reading instructions, and there are teachers that would have toxic phonics in their teaching prep programs. And concerns have arisen with professional development and instructional costs. So I know that's something that's come up a ton for us, especially during my time on the board. And it is on on this was radar and is something that probably we're working together with Department of Education to, you know, get some greater clarification and and that and so on. Other than that, you know, front of us is among every meeting of every month of everything to do with school boards and. You know, there's pros and cons. It seems like the majority of school districts are still hold a law. Like, that's the feasibility of of the process. So looking forward to some more information next time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our next point. Our committee reports. Before we discuss policy, do we have any other committee report?
We had audit committee today. We had an audit of the food service and everything came back looking good. We have that report. He was very positive. It means to be changed. It's all going very well.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, great. So then moving on to policy. Tonight, everybody had a copy of the modified policy of school facilities, material equipment. This was discussed in prior meetings without clarifying some of the facility use fees. Just some of the language I was in here. So if everybody wants to take a minute, just go through there. I think we have a few points that we want to discuss about this. And then hopefully tonight, if we're all in favor, we can go ahead and adopt this policy. And I will say, generally speaking, last meeting, we discussed different tiers and classifications of groups that would be using the facility. All of that has been moved, clarification has been made about who can use the facilities, the school groups, the school sports, the community groups. Clarification has been made that the fee is a one time use fee. And then the policy that elaborates also custodial, security, soundbite technician, and other areas where staff may be needed, where additional we may be incurred. So just for the broad conversation. Earlier tonight, there was a point brought up, if you guys want to turn to the second to last page. Under the topic of other. Some of the miscellaneous clarifications we're here. Think one of the groups. That's a little bit as well. I agree that youth athletic groups will have access to grass fields excluding one game turf field during the season. I'm sure we'd like to maybe make sense to that as to not exclude them from having access to only one game per season.
Yeah, I believe we already have a section that's privately scheduled that kind of takes care of the use, the proper and fair use of the fields. There's no reason just to use that section in that way that the youth could use the field if it's available. There's no reason that kind of be built sitting there that they could utilize.
Well, sorry, one other point, I think maybe you should reflect that district youth athletic groups. Just so we're clear that, you know, these are these are athletic programs housed within the district. Because I do know that I don't believe that it's done properly, so I don't know that this policy will correct it. But there are quite a few outside of other groups that have no affiliation with Goshen. Or often see attempting at least to use the facilities. So I just, I think that while we're practicing with this policy, you know, somewhat accomplishing. We shouldn't pigeonhole it, you know. One wide program from, you know. Middle town, so I'm kind of saying, hey, now your policy says that I can I can use the athletic fields and youth athletic group. So I'm sure we thought that it's basically based.
Yeah, I agree with those points. So I made a couple of notes here. What if we change the language on point number three to read? District youth athletic groups will have access to grass fields and games on turf fields during the season when available. Does that sound nice?
I agree.
Okay. All right, were there any other documents regarding the district standpoint? Is there any question?
No, this is obviously just something that we just need clarity on so that when it comes to the offer for approval. Goes to Mr. Cardinal, comes to Miss Lammeran, when we're looking at charges, that it's pretty clear. I think there's nothing left to interpret. Thank you very much.
Yeah, following suit with that, we've also seen a lot of these meetings with us. Any other feedback on that?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Do you have any other thoughts, comments, or comments regarding this policy? Okay, very good. Is everybody comfortable that that did you put that on the agenda today? Not this night. Yes, we have it there ready to come.
Yes.
All right, that's great. So moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Kurtz Coats.
Thank you, Minister of Office. So one of the requests to the Board of Education was to examine the upcoming budget calendar. We blew it up, the twenty five, twenty six school year, looking for ways to try to advance the process earlier in the year. I want to predicate what we're going to discuss tonight, really on the fact that we are watching very closely that the Rockefeller Institute is completing a study that's due to the governor by December first for consideration for foundation aid and what a new foundation aid formula may look like, taking part regionally in many of those conversations. And when Miss Lammeran and I met to go through a revised budget calendar, that was really the focus of trying to plan and move a lot of our process earlier in the school year. So what we have prepared is a proposal, obviously, for you to review tonight. I'm just gonna walk through some of the highlights. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Lammeran to jump in on parts of the discussion that she may need to fill in some gaps. So typically, what we do is we wait until somewhere around the November area and we begin to ask our principals and directors to start to provide us with high level information on their thoughts on things that simplify as building level supplies, equipment. But then the more costly piece is to enhancements, excuse me, enhancements to the program that involve staffing. Obviously, we know that staffing takes up eighty percent of the budget, staffing and benefits. And that's really where the the big drivers of the budget are. We're now going to advance that to before the beginning of the first of the calendar year. And we're going to also start to look at what to some of our revenue projections and our expense projections look like from as simple as a rollover budget. Now, when we quantify a rollover budget, we need to remember that we're not just somebody taking the same cost. We're looking at our contractual obligations, of step advancement, of lane changes, things that we have historically seen in the budget. So that we can begin to share with the board, what does our gap look like between our expenses and what our revenue is going to be. For this year, that's going to be exceptionally challenging because what we're anticipating is we're going to see at a bare minimum a flat foundation aid, if not potentially a reduction in foundation aid, which will beg the question of where do we balance it out with expenses? And then in terms of where do we want to try to set the levy is not to defer as much of that to the local share as would be needed to balance the budget. So if you look, by November, we're going to attempt to have that quantified for the board to open those conversations for twenty five, twenty six. By the beginning of December, we'll start to discuss what some of those anticipated costs may be, trying to throw into the conversation some of those things that we might want to see in a new budget cycle. By the beginning of January, then that will allow us, if we have collected that data that I spoke about earlier from our principals and directors, to launch right into some of the conversations on program on things that are going to affect the students directly. We'll have our non-instructional, which is inclusive of transportation facilities before the end of January. We'll then get into instructional by the beginning of February. We're hoping at that point, because that will be the largest portion of the budget, to have seen something from the governor and from the legislature on proposals for what revenue may look like. And I want to just go back to for a moment where foundation aid fits into this part of the conversation. Under the assumption that the governor will receive a report from the Rockefeller Institute. We are assuming that she's going to take whatever the findings of that report are and use it in this budget cycle. There's a reason that she's pushing as hard as she is to try to get that done. The I I've spoken personally with Robert Magna, the president of the Rockefeller Institute, and he said, we're gonna give them something by December first. I don't know what we can quantify that's going to be, but they absolutely will get something. We do fully anticipate the governor is going to put that into this year's budget cycle. Making those assumptions then that that is incorporated in the budget. By that time in January or early February, we really should have some kind of a picture, what direction that we're headed in. That way, we can start to make those decisions on the heaviest things that are going to sit in the budget and what we might want to ask the public for support on during the new school year. If you keep going down, by the beginning of March, we'll be completely done with the budget presentations from the principals and directors. That will leave us, Miss Lammeran and I planned on between two and three meetings, to have those specific conversations on things that we might want to see added, things that we might want to see removed from, things that might want to see revised from the budget before the board has to, A, adopt the budget, but B, more importantly, set what the tax levy is going to be. Most importantly, the local share of the budget. We flip over to the back. That allows for a timely adoption of the budget with the hope, if you will, that we have an approved budget from the state that is a large concern this year, given that there could be a a significant change to the way that the state funds their share of school spending in the state. We're making the assumption that it would be there, but we would adopt a budget based on the information that we have on the time. Allows to do all the required submissions before then and present the budget to the community for a public vote by May twelfth. So we kept this in draft format. I know I didn't read verbatim what's here on the proposal. I wanted to open this up for conversation tonight to see if there's anything that you would want amended, changed with the hope of being in our next meeting, meeting of October, being able to adopt the budget calendars. I'll pause there and see if there's any discussion items, questions, or just anything that I missed that you would want to add in.
No, other than the tax levy cap projection, we could also discuss that. But it's a it's a projection as well.
Just a judgment comment that I appreciated that nice and early. We're actually starting this redevelopment schedule. I know that I feel like that this is gonna be very helpful to keep us on task and then really, you know, consider those big decisions nice and early on because before you know it, we're there again. So we definitely appreciate the early efforts to organize this out.
Yeah, I just agree. I would like to see that projection. So I think that was something which probably sparked a little bit of this calendar, to assemble those items up. So we could, again, just a projection, but this way we're having that conversation a little bit earlier. And if it gets passed, we'd be great.
All right, so we will plan then on taking this back to draft format. We'll figure it out at the next meeting. Sounds good.
Okay. I wanted to review and update the presentation that Mr. St. Lawrence did at the end of the last school year on mixed competition. Mr. Left, are we able to put it on the screen? Excellent. Thanks, sir. So just to recall quickly, and I'm not going to go verbatim through the whole presentation. Mr. St. Lawrence gave us a detailed presentation on what was then a proposal from the New York State Education Department regarding mixed competition. And there was about a thirty page document that Nixon had given to school districts and to the communities around the state on what potential changes may have looked like in mixed competition. If you don't mind, go to the next screen, sir. So in general, some of the proposed regulations were that females would be able to play on a boys team if there was no equivalent girls team. Males would be able to play a girls team if there was no equivalent boys team. There were some conditions by which that might be able to happen. One of the most specific, the more specific updates also that was embedded in that part of the change. For many years, the state had used something called the Tanner scale to evaluate whether a younger student could also play up into junior varsity or varsity sports. The regulation also proposed to delete that or disband that from being used as well. Go to the next slide. Again, it gave some examples on when students could try out for different sports, what the conditions would have to be. Use the example of baseball and softball. If you recall, Mr. St. Lawrence at the time talked about some of the concerns that existed from from his vantage point as an athletic director, simply based on the size of the field, some of the conditions of having boys play with girls under those circumstances. Go to the next slide, please. Again, just to finish off, talked about volleyball, talked about flag football, talked about the conditions where a boy could participate in sports that had been set up for girls to play in. So in summary, the State Education Department paused this initiative. They have decided to take no action in this session. We are anticipating that this may resurface again in the next session in revised format. We do not know what that will look like as of now, but the State Education Department took no action on this. It's our understanding that they've received hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages from around the state in terms of concerns, suggestions for revision. I don't know that they will completely completely abandon this altogether. I do believe that they will come back to parts of this, namely things like the Tanner scale. I even think from athletic directors around the state, athletic directors agree that it's no longer a meaningful use of that instrument to evaluate students in terms of their preparedness to participate in junior varsity or varsity sports. But for the time being, the State Education Department has paused. They are not taking any action on this. But we do see, expect to see perhaps a revision of this come up in the next legislative session. Pause there if there's any questions. Thank you, Mr. Redd. Finally, I just wanted to provide an update on where we stand in terms of our program analysis for special education. We have been working with Alliance Education Associates. They have shared with the district in draft format a report based on potential revenue that the district could draw in terms of Medicaid funding. Again, this is very much in draft format, and they have asked us to verify some data that exists. And there are numerous assumptions that we have to work through together with them to see if what they have shared with us would be a viable pathway. I've asked Mrs. Lammeran to reach out to our third party agent that we use currently for stacking to see if there is a service that if we do decide to begin to bill for Medicaid funding, that this would be a service that we could use. She is in the process of contacting them and see if that's going to be a viable alternative. Also, they shared with me that they still have several groups that they want to meet with. There are some appointments that they have not been able to have yet, virtually or in person. I do have a meeting scheduled, a virtual meeting scheduled with the team that is leading the program review on the nineteenth. They're going to give me a full detail update of where they stand. And after that, I'll be able to come back and share more information on how progress is coming and when they think that they might be completing the process.
That will conclude for the season. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Coats. All right, moving on, our Assistant Superintendent Business Report, Ms. Lori Beth Lammerat.
Thank you. I do not have any financial updates for tonight, but I will have the August financial at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. And then moving on, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel Technology.
Alright, thank you. And moving on, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel Technology Report, Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Good evening, everyone. So by coincidence, you had mentioned phonemic awareness. So tonight I'll discuss Hegarty phonemic awareness curriculum. So this is something that we're looking to pilot at Special Avenue School. So the Hegarty phonemic awareness curriculum allows us in a multi-sensory way to deliver explicit instruction in phonemic awareness. So hopefully, through this instruction over the course of thirty plus weeks, our students will be able to. Take a look at actual sounds, learn to blend, segment, and manipulate those sounds. This is a key component of foundational literacy and the development of reading skills. And it is science of reading aligned. So the program, from what we can see through research, is a very productive, very successful program, and we'll start that pilot in kindergarten. This will be, as I said, thirty-five weeks. It is daily lessons that last approximately ten minutes in time. So each of our students will go through this in their classroom setting. This is, of course, in addition to our our general curriculum in literacy, so the scholastic program. Right now, we've had our members of the AIS department actually go out for training at Bosse's. And we started this in the spring, so back in May, we sent out our AIS team. They're going to meet with all of our teachers in kindergarten on Wednesday to begin a train the trainer type model. And then we'll be prepared to begin to to implement. This program here, we're going to monitor, so there are assessments built into the actual Hegarty program. But keep in mind, we also have benchmark assessments per se within the scholastic program as well. So hopefully, throughout the course of the year, we'll see improvements, especially in this foundational skill phonemic awareness. And then it'll help us to make a better decision of which way we'd like to go with this program in the future. It may lead to widespread use, especially K two. Any any questions about Hegarty?
Just one. And I love the Hegarty program. What, so when you talk about pilot, how many classes?
So we're gonna do it with our entire kindergarten, so all of our kindergarten teachers will go through this training. And hopefully then, you know, we'll be able to implement this. Ms. Driscoll and I are well aware that, you know, we believe that we'll probably have to continue to go through professional development throughout the course of the year. So as those opportunities arise, we'll look for those and get our 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 teachers and teacher assistants right into those trainings for further professional development.
And and if it's if it's successful, will, what would the plan be? Would the plan be to train the entire building? Will you be doing a roll-up model?
Yeah. So the way that it stands today, we're not looking to use it as an intervention, but rather a supplement for the entire, in this case, kindergarten, right? So we would like to bring it out through grade one and grade two in its entirety. As you know, with specially designed instruction and also within our AIS departments, we have specially designed instruction. We have other enrichment and supplementals that we can use for intervention purposes. So we'd like to bring it in. We'll see how it goes with kindergarten. I I don't want to, you know, bet on anything, but I I foresee success with this. It is a great program. And then hopefully, you know, through more professional development, we'll bring it into grade one and grade two, widespread as a as a supplement to this scholastic curriculum.
Awesome. Thanks.
You got it. Um, any other questions?
Just a a general comment that last year, there was a mission to roll out online ELA program. And throughout the course of the year, as we were looking at it and getting feedback from some of the staffs, the admin, some of the teachers. You had given us updates along the way. I found that to be useful information. So I think it would be great to, you know, hear as this is rolling out, as professional development continues, what what the feedback is and, you know, how that's.
Understood. We'll do.
I'd like to just jump on that, too. It would be great to see like a presentation, you know, whether it be ten weeks in, fifteen weeks in. To see the data from, you know, pre and post and how it's working. No, I wouldn't see that.
Okay.
Be great. Thank you.
Anything further? So in addition to Hegarty in district, in our business department, we're bringing in Stu Kent, which is a software program. So this this will provide our digital marketing and media and entrepreneurship courses with. Pretty much a fully interactive environment where our students can go through and utilize the skills in a, again, a virtual environment in a practical sense. So this will require students to create and manage marketing budgets. They'll have to go through hiring processes, they'll they'll conduct market research. And of course, this is all within our business department, our two courses, one of which is dual credit through Ramapo. So this will be a nice addition to the curriculum. It is edlaw two D compliant, so we're very confident in what it offers. And of course, the safety and security of the program. So that will be in our business department, once again, with social media marketing and our entrepreneurship courses. And then finally, with our computer science courses through Siena College. Unfortunately, Replit was one of the programs that we utilized with the program for the purpose of coding. Replit no longer exists, and so we had to move along to what is now Juice Mind. So Juice Mind, you know, basically provides another virtual environment for our students to code in. So on this large platform, you know, you you see exactly what coding looks like. You go through the process of coding. But the benefit of it is that our teachers see it real time. They're able to provide feedback real time. And our students are able to see their coding in real time as well. So through programming, we're able to see exactly what our our robots will be doing. And again, this is a part of our Siena computer and science courses. So I think we're we're up and running. We've got the latest and greatest happening as far as our softwares. I'm excited about the Hegarty phonemic awareness curriculum. I know. This was a discussion that that we had with Kristen Driscoll and and her entire team. When we were going through the the vetting process of our literacy program, so to bring it on as a pilot is very exciting for us. And we'll keep you informed and provide updates as we go. Any further questions? Thank you very much. That concludes the report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I need a motion to approve the. Be resolved upon recommendations of schools, Board of Education approves the consent agenda. Alright, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Scott, Brett. Be resolved upon recommendations of schools, Board of Education approves the minutes of September third, twenty twenty four, regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Need a motion to approve the recommendations of the Committee of Special Education Committee on Preschool Special Education. John. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby arranges special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool. And school age students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSE, and Committee on Special Education, CSE. During the period of August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, through and including September ninth, twenty twenty four. Directs the district to arrange for the provision to set special education programs and services by such preschool and school age students with disabilities. As recommended during such time period by the CPSE and CSE. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Need a motion to approve the agreement for services. Linda Mood Bell Learning Process Processes, Brett. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education enters into an agreement. Linda Mood Bell Learning Processes to provide a visualization and verbalizing online workshop on October seventh, twenty twenty four. At the fee of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to approve the agreement for services with White Glove. Billy, Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education enters into an agreement with White Glove. To provide healthcare services to those central school district students affected September first, twenty twenty four. According to the rates set forth in the agreement. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Need a motion to approve the agreement for services, LK Therapy, PT, OT, and SLP, PLLC. John, Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education enters into an agreement. LK Therapy, PT, OT, and SLP, PLLC. To provide speech and language therapy, physical therapy, facial therapy, and special educational instruction services. Goes from central school district students affected July first, twenty twenty four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, at a rate of eighty seven dollars per head hour. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor? Close. Need a motion to approve special education agreement, SJ and Associates. Brett. Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education enters into an agreement with SJ Associates. To provide bilingual speech evaluations, bilingual bilingual psychoeducational evaluation services. Special education students affected twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, according to the following themes. Bilingual speech evaluations at five hundred and twenty five dollars per evaluation. Bilingual psychoeducational evaluations at one thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars per evaluation. And bilingual psychoeducational consultations at one hundred and seven calories per hour by phone and one hundred and ninety dollars per hour in person. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor? Close. Need a motion to approve the agreement for special education services, Manhattan Psychology Group. Scott. Be further resolved, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Board of Education approves entering into an agreement. For services with Dr. Chelsea Rosen, Manhattan Psychology Group, PC, to provide consultation services. Special education students affected for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, according to rates set forth in the agreement. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. We need a motion to approve budgetary transfers. Billy, Ashley. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the following budgetary transfers in aggregate over one hundred and five thousand dollars. Funding new positions based on enrollment in special needs, changes movements of staff between codes, contractual obligations. In an amount of six hundred and twenty two thousand one hundred dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the proposal from Land Associates for site analysis feasibility study, Erie Street property. Scott, Ashley. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal from Land Associates Engineering, Planning, Architecture, Surveying, LOPE. Due at September ninth, twenty twenty four, between site analysis, feasibility study. District owned property at the owner of Webster Avenue in Erie Street for an hourly fee. Not to exceed three thousand dollars for said services. Be further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the proposal. In favor? Close. Need a motion to authorize the intervention impacts for statutory proceedings. John. Scott. Be resolved, the Board of Education, goes from central school district hereby authorized, authorizes. Thomas, Rowan, Waxman, Pedagro, and Mail, LOPE, to take any and all actions necessary to intervene. In the proceedings as presented, mentioned in the Supreme Court of the State of New York, County of Orange, pursuant to Article seven of the Real Property Act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Need a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement, Dyson, Chedden, PC. Ashley, Shannon. Be resolved, Board of Education approves the amendment to the agreement with Dyson and Chedden. By investigative services approved on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, subsequently amended May twenty second, twenty twenty four. And be it further resolved, Board of Education authorizes the Board of President to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Alright, I need a motion to approve the policy updates, the first reading, renumbering, and readoption. So Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves. The first reading with edits discussed, waiting to set a reading, renumbering, and readoption. Of the following policy. Use of schools, facilities, period. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Alright. Any board member issues? One quick point is that. We've studied with our big bus streets. I was thinking, Dr. Person, if you wouldn't mind just highlighting how the process might look. Last meeting, we heard about some tensions and, you know, just to give a little update on where we're headed, what's going on, process.
Sure. So our our PR specialist will be back in the district tomorrow, and she will be sending out for us a list of three meetings coming up on three subsequent Wednesdays, starting on the twenty fifth. That will allow us to bring the community group that expressed interest on the sign up form that went out. We intend at the first meeting to do a site walk of the property, so people can see exactly what portion of Erie Street Park. Belongs currently belongs to the school district. We would then come back to this room and talk about what the legal obligations are of the district when it wants to transfer a piece of property. Get all that out of the way in the first meeting. I spoke with Mary Donald multiple multiple times now, expressing to her the need for her or a member of the team to be here. To partner in this with us, to be able to share with those that are interested. What are the hopeful uses going to be if the property is transferred to the village and to the JRC? That meeting could allow for them to start to explain some of what their intended use would be of the property, what it might look like. What are some of the issues that they may see in terms of how they would tend to manage the property moving forward? And the last meeting would be, if there are any questions that come up at that second meeting, for them to come back, respond to those. Questions and answers, and then for the board, deliberate, is this something that I want to move forward with? To talk about setting a a date for a referendum, if this is going to go to vote. Because from there, there would be some legal obligations, so I would have to work directly with Mrs. Farrell to make sure that we could meet specific timelines. If we were going to set a vote for a transfer of that property from the district to the village.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Anybody have any other comments? Alright, then moving on, I need a motion to go into executive session. John. Be resolved, the Board of Education, under, into a back blue session, with the intent not to reconvene with business board company. Discussion related to the one historic, big one, there's Congress. Alright, thank you. Have a good night.